I could have, I could have subcut it. Even though it was.
You can do that next time.
We're gonna have a ballgame.
I know. I know, but I was just like. I don't know why I was like.
Did anybody get a poll?
Is anybody getting a poll in the council?
Well, maybe.
Oh, sorry.
First, I think it's gonna be like.
Maybe some truth, like.
Cause the issue is that they're, um, the online work. Do it on a verbal sense then. Or saying that you want to make sure the road court goes straight and doesn't block. Corner on first and at home. You heard about Luke. Yep. Yeah. You have. Just blocking off that one little section on the side. Yeah, I'm all, I'm a hundred percent with you. You are correct. Just hearing.
Now I guess.
We all get it. What do we need to do?
I've seen it all this way. Bring air conditioner wasn't on.
Do you want any more? I mean, thank you, I know who he is. Sorry, thank you. I'm not sure we really came those and fixed this up, so it put it out there. Camera's always on that, my fault.
I have to be able to write.
There's Sprejman in between. I didn't eat, I didn't eat nothing.
Brett, we're having this here.
I didn't get invited, I didn't. I didn't get invited, I didn't. I had a, I know I was coming home to birthday. I did that, yeah, you're like the best part of your life. Didn't have the. So, we'll get to that. Who's been down? I'm watching you.
I just saw Mike actually that way.
Alright, I'll be right back. We're all on the way because you passed. You're very kind. It's different. All right, you're ready to go.
There. Not sure who's there tonight.
Pat.
Pat.
Can't see everything.
Alright, welcome everyone to the August sixth, twenty fourteen Shakopee City Council Workshop. Item number one, uh, we need two, call the roll, call the meeting to order actually at, uh, seven oh three. Mr. McNeil, could please call the roll?
I have noted it, thank you.
Thank you very much. Item number two, pledge of allegiance, all stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Liberty's standards. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, item number three, approval of the agenda, are there any additions or corrections to the overall agenda this evening?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. McNeil.
Um, we are going to defer item seven B, which was the Chamber of Commerce Public Policy Committee's signed regulation discussion to the meeting of September second. Instead, we're going to substitute a, uh, an introductory discussion of form-based zoning.
Thank you, sir. Any other additions or corrections to the agenda? Seeing none, uh, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the agenda as amended.
Counselor Mokel, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Senator Lou, say any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
And an opposed? Passes unanimously. Item four, any, uh, changes to consent business this evening that we'd like to see? Counselor Whiting?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Counselor Lehman?
Second.
Mr. McNeil, could you please read the consent business?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Four C one, authorize the staff to utilize repurchase agreement with Ag Power Enterprises for a two thousand thirteen John Deere tractor in the amount of seven thousand dollars. Four C two, authorize the staff to contract with Northwest Asphalt Inc. for the two thousand fourteen repaving project for trails in the amount of forty-eight thousand and eight dollars. Four C three, authorize the staff to contract with Pipe Cleaning, uh, excuse me, Pipe Services Corporation for the televising and cleaning of approximately twenty thousand linear feet of sanitary sewer and televising of approximately six thousand linear feet of storm sewer in the amount of nineteen thousand fifteen dollars ninety-two cents. Four C four has three actions, the first adopts resolution of seventy-four seventy, accepting bids in the two thousand fourteen trail improvement project for the construction of Batumans Trails on County Road one oh one from Memorial Park to Saracen Street and an extension of Coria Lake Trail to Gateway Avenue. Secondly, authorizes the appropriate city officials to execute an extension agreement with WSB and Associates for construction engineering services. And thirdly, authorizes the city attorney to utilize a five percent contingency for quantity adjustments and change orders. Four F one, approves payments of bills and electronic transfers in the amount of two million seven hundred twenty thousand one hundred fifty-two dollars and four cents. And finally, four F two, approves the closure of two, the two hundred block of East First Avenue for August sixteenth's grand opening of the Journey Emporium, two thirty East First Avenue, and suspends ordinance number five point oh nine two, allowing for the consumption of alcohol, the non-glass containers on First Avenue, further approving a temporary three-two malt beer license for the Shakopee American Legion to sell beer during this event.
Thank you very much, sir. Any discussion on those items? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. We move on to item number five, recognition of involved citizens by city council. Uh, this is time for anybody to speak about items that are not on the agenda. We'll all turn around and stare. Alright, seeing none, we're gonna move on to item number seven A one. Consider the adoption of the transit consolidation agreement with Minnesota Valley Transit Authority. Mr. Leek?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Uh, we have with us tonight, excuse me, uh, Jane Cancier from Minnesota Valley Transit Authority, if you have questions for her. Um, I'm going to use a presentation that she's put together for use with the other cities, just as an outline for our discussion this evening. Also with us is the city's attorney in this matter, George Hoff, if you have any questions for him. Basically, what we're asking this evening is that you approve two resolutions, one of them approving the consolidation agreement, which you've seen before in various forms. You have on the table a revised agree, uh, resolution, which would approve that contingent on approval by the city of Prior Lake and the members of the MBTA board currently. In your package, you also have a resolution which would approve the amended joint powers agreement for the Minnesota Valley Transit Authority. That is the document that sets up their basic rules of operation and is in large part amended to include Prior Lake and Shakopee as board members. Um, in conversation right before the meeting, we believe it's appropriate to add some small language to that resolution that also makes it contingent on approval of the coordination or the consolidation agreement by the MBTA members and Prior Lake. So, when you take action on that one, I'd ask that it be on the resolution with the amendment to add such language. Now, to go through the presentation very briefly, and you've seen some elements of this before. Um, this is MBTA's corporate commitment, if you will, their vision, what their focus is, and it is very customer service oriented. Like ourselves, they survey their ridership quite often, and they have very high satisfaction levels, and they have for all the years I've worked with them. That goes to about eighteen years now. Um, and their ultimate goal, like ours, is to provide increased and improved transportation opportunities south of the Minnesota River. The purpose of this proposed con- consolidation of services is to provide for some greater long-term efficiencies in administration, in, uh, purchasing for purposes of, uh, facilities and assets used in providing transportation, um, and also flexibility in doing route design, um, within the south of the river area. There are a number of shared benefits, and I think we've talked about those a number of time, a number of times in the past. And I would just reiterate for those people who are listening who aren't aware of it, way back in two thousand five, and Ms. Cancier was a planner at the city of Prior Lake at that time, we did a Scott County plan, and in that Scott County plan, um, we basically suggested that in the future consolidation of transit services south of the river would make sense. So, we're following that path that we began with essentially a merger of Prior Lake, Shakopee, and, um, to some extent, Scott County's services as well. Um, this is the current service area, I believe, and you can see how that would be expanded with the services that we provide. Of course, here in Shakopee, we provide two services, one is the Blue Express, which we provide in combination with the city of Prior Lake. But we also provide a fixed route Monday through Fri- Friday's circulator service. And you'll recall in some of the documents that we've shared with you before, one component of the startup costs that have been identified is the, uh, potential of a study for redesign of a circulator service that might have broader applicability than just within the city of Shakopee. Um, these are just some fast facts about the number of riders, what our operating expenses have been. Um, and let me say about the Blue Express, we've had very dramatic growth ever since we began that service in July of two thousand seven. Uh, most years, we've had even more growth than the other suburban transit providers, although largely the suburban transit providers have outpaced Metro Transit in their rate of growth. Our pure number of riders is, of course, still smaller. On the circulator side, we've continued to have small increases in that service. Uh, one of the things that really keeps that from becoming a high-growth service is that it is only operated during limited hours Monday through Friday. These are the guiding principles that MBTA uses in making decisions about whether or not they're going to change service, and they would apply to our services if they're merged into MBTA as well. So, if you have questions about that, uh, certainly we'll entertain those. Um, you know about the process, we've had a technical work group, uh, folks like Ms. Cancier and myself, who've done a lot of the work in identifying the issues, the timelines, the potential costs. Uh, some of you have attended the electorate, elected work group meetings where the policy direction on where to take this negotiation has occurred. And we are at that point right now where we're asking our city council here in Shakopee uh, to approve those resolutions that would allow this to move forward. Prior Lake has this scheduled for their consideration, I believe, next Monday on the eleventh. If both of our city councils approve it, it will then be sent out to the existing members of MBTA for their review. Um, and I'm not sure, but from the email, I think, um, Apple Valley may have already been taking a look at this information that Ms. Cancier has put together. Uh, the major points about the merger agreement is that it establishes an effective date, a consolidation date of January one, two thousand fifteen. More than that, as you know, it identifies the potential startup costs, and we've summarized them in the report. If I recall correctly, it's about two hundred and seventy-six thousand, that's contemplated right now from the city of Shakopee, although there is some potential that that could grow. Um, there is also a schedule for the transfer of remaining transit fund balances. An initial transfer from Shakopee of three hundred thousand, and later in two thousand fifteen, any balance that we may have after spend down. You'll note in the report that I provided you, we identified three potential projects, one of them, participation in a pretty major transit way. Um, and, um, guided lane, not guided lane, but, um, multi-occupant vehicle lane on one sixty-nine. So, Prior Lake and Shakopee would each share in about two hundred thousand of the cost. I think the county indicated they would share in about a million of that. Those are the major spend downs, as well as some technical things. Here again, uh, the startup and, and transfer and consolidation summarized in tabular form for you. The minimal length of initial membership is three years, if after three years it's decided that it's not working to be a part, the cities would have the ability to opt out of Minnesota Valley Transit. And these are some of the milestones that we have either met or in the process of meeting through this year and then into two thousand fifteen, with August of two thousand fifteen being the final fund transfer point for any, uh, reserves or fund balances that Prior Lake and Shakopee have in their transit accounts. And again, for those who may be listening, transit funding is not a part of the city's general fund. It flows from the Minnesota Vehicle Sales Tax, as well as the fares that we collect, but it has no impact on the city's general fund. So, with that, if you have questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you. Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, I've got three questions for staff, or possibly the MBTA representatives. The first one is, it talks about, talks about, uh, there's no guarantee that Shakopee's services won't be cut, at least in the first few years. Seems to me that if we're transferring the dollars we have allocated for transit that we utilize today in Shakopee, that at a minimum, them would stay. And I was hoping, as part of my second question, that, as this council has talked about, that in doing this, we're, we're offering a greater opportunity for our folks to have, uh, more connectivity to other options that MBTA offers, which likewise goes to what, uh, their current ridership now would have the option and opportunity to utilize their services further southwest to, to Shakopee. So, that's kind of a mutual thing there. Um, and it really doesn't spell that out, but them are just a couple of concerns the way it's worded. And then the last one I had, Mayor, was, uh, we know in the future, we're gonna have a forty-one river crossing. It's gonna be a pretty big crossing, it, it is a ways out. I would expect that that would be a pretty major transportation route. Good location for some kind of a park and ride or some route. And who is the lead on it? Is it Scott County, Shakopee, and Prior Lake pushing that as a group on this body, or is it MBTA's, uh, plan also to, to put that into their long-term plan?
Um, Counselor Lehman, members of the council, let me take that in reverse order. With respect to the forty-one river crossing, because I think I've spent most of my adult life on that issue now. The draft, um, AU, the draft A U A R for the tier one level, which establishes a route for that river crossing, does, after years of development, contain elements that talk about it being a transportation route. What's contemplated currently is not that the cities or Scott County or MBTA or anyone else alone would be at the lead on that, but you'll remember that we have a work group with all of the, um, stakeholders that is intended to continue into the future, to the point when we get to the tier two E I S that actually establishes the parameters of the project through an environmental analysis. And it's that group in total, that's expected to make sure that it remains a transportation corridor and link in the future. Um, with respect to the connectivity, one of the reasons for doing the study related to the circulator is I know that Ms. Cancier and I, over the last few years, have concerns about, have had concerns about having greater connectivity and accessibility to locations outside of Shakopee. So, part of that study addresses that. The, um, one sixty-nine study that I alluded to, that we want to get going on with Scott County, also goes to that issue. How do you connect the one sixty-nine corridor to other service locations? So, those are a couple of ways that I think we're preserving and moving forward on connectivity issues. Now, with respect to the language about the service not necessarily being preserved for the couple of years, uh, those who were part of the elected work group, we know that at that group, we had a lot of discussion about it. We certainly did at the technical work group. And I think the reality is, and certainly from MBTA's perspective, is transit funding has been pretty volatile. And if transit funding in the legislative session coming up were to be cut substantially, then probably everyone who is a part of MBTA would have to see some transportation cuts. Certainly, that's happened in the past for MBTA, it's happened for Southwest. We haven't had to do that here in Shakopee and Prior Lake since two thousand seven. And so, the language we ended up with sort of honors the fact that there is a concern for the existing members that they're not stuck providing the same level of service that we started out with, when they're having to cut service to their jurisdictions. Now, Ms. Cancier, Mr. Hoff may have comments about it, but I think that's the basic underlying discussion we've had.
Counselor Whiting?
Uh, that is a concern of mine, too, the, the service routes, but I do understand that, uh, entering into this new partnership will have some give and take. Uh, one concern of mine, though, is if, uh, you know, we're entering in this group with, that involves several other cities and other municipalities, what is the effect if one of those groups pulls out, um, for any reason, on, on us?
Well, I think that's an issue that is active right now for the board, because I understand that Dakota County had indicated that they may withdraw from the Joint Powers Association. And Ms. Cancier can comment on it. From a practical perspective, um, it reduces the size of the board and may have an impact on, on voting. Certainly, if we were a part of the joint powers agreement, the board would consist of nine members if someone pulled out. You have the potential for a split vote of four to four on issues if they're really controversial. That's not a fun thing to have, but it does happen, um, in organizations all the time. Beyond that, I'm not sure what the implications might be. Um, certainly, it would affect the budget that MBTA has to provide transit services, because each of the cities provide their M best for the operating budget for the services that, uh, MBTA has. And I would imagine they may have to look at what services they provide without that additional budget. Jane, did you want to add anything?
Thank you. Thank you, Michael, Mayor, and members of the council. Um, let me add two things. First of all.
Since you've been here last, we've had new people on board.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Jane Cancier. Last time I was here, I believe I was with the city of Prior Lake. Now, I'm project manager for, um, Minnesota Valley Transit. Um, uh, where was, oh, okay. Um, first, two things. One, with respect to service, um, as, as Mr. Leek indicated, we worked really long and hard on that language. Um, it is not in the board, the MBTA board was very clear, it is not the board's intent or MBTA, MBTA's intent to cut service in any way, shape, or form. That's, that doesn't, that's not good for anyone. And we all realize that, um, but as you said, we can't guarantee funding. Um, so, we didn't feel comfortable guaranteeing. What we do feel comfortable is that we are going to do the best job we can. If routes have to be cut, we have a very detailed process that needs to be followed. Cities of Prior Lake and Shakopee, as well as Scott County, are, will all be full voting members of the board. Scott County will actually have four voting members with Savage. So, I mean, there's a lot of input involved in that. Um, as to the question of, um, what was the second question?
Dakota County pulling out.
Oh, Dakota County. Well, Dakota County doesn't bring any funding to the table in, in the way that the cities do, neither does Scott County. Um, they bring a presence in terms of collaboration, assisting us with, um, all the many things counties have the abilities to do that cities can't, and we can't as a joint powers. Um, I, it, um, so, while I think the, if Dakota County decides ultimately to leave MBTA as a voting member, it will be a loss in collaboration, it's not a loss in funding. Um, in terms of the other cities, um, at this point, I see that as highly unlikely. And should it occur, um, the system now is so complex that it would really be, it would be a much larger issue than just one city pulling out, it would really be an, almost an unraveling of the system. And, um, that's a much bigger issue than any of us want to get into. And I, and again, that is, I don't believe that is anywhere in the near future, or even the distant future. Um, the MBTA board in my last six or seven months with the group has proven to be, um, very cohesive, uh, very supportive of transit in general and transit expansion, the board is supportive of this merger, and, um, being able to have the opportunities presented for the whole south of the river.
Can I get a little more clarity, Mr. Mayor? So, what we're saying is if the county of Dakota, Dakota County pulls out, the cities that are still involved in Dakota County are still beginning to be a player, still have service routes out there, and they still have active.
That is exactly, that is exactly correct. It's only Dakota County as a board pulls out of the system, and even if they have chosen to do that, they've tentatively indicated they would remain as ex officio members, so. And what we would lose is the relationship and the collaboration we have, very similar to what we currently have with Scott County.
Thank you. Counselor Lehman?
The Mar, the Scott County Marshall Ride Transit Location and the, uh, County Road sixteen, uh, transit location, will then be utilized then by?
Yes. What's, what that's waiting on, as we all know, is buses. Um, Prior Lake has a C M A grant, the buses should be delivered in a couple of months, Shakopee has a C M A grant. Buses are probably nine months out at this point, nine months to a year. MBTA, even though we will basically take over those grants, be assigned those grants, we are still bound by the terms of those. And to provide service at that locations, we have every intention of utilizing the Marshall Road Transit Station, it's just a matter of getting the infrastructure we need to do it.
Is that anybody?
I have a question on the spend down.
Counselor Lou.
What are the, what are we going to be allowed? Are we gonna get the stoplight there on seventeenth, uh?
Counselor Lou, members of the council, uh, we had quite a discussion about that, especially with Scott County, Leslie Vermillion, the deputy administrator. And it appears that it would not be possible to use transit funds for the signal at Weston Court and County Road sixteen. So, that's not an item that's in the spend down list. The only three that are, are the two hundred thousand dollar contribution for the one sixty-nine study, some A V L equipment, and some other, um, camera upgrades. I think it's to a couple of the park and rides. Um, those are the only things we contemplate now. It is still possible, because the year's not out, if we identify other items, we might be able to spend down for them. But the signal unfortunately appears to be one we can't do. Let me, uh, just comment very briefly on Marshall Road Transit Station and Service. We just learned preliminarily today that Southwest apparently had a bus coming, opted not to take it. So, we may, in Shakopee, actually get one of the three buses in, uh, much shorter time than we're contemplating. We'll have to see how that plays out. We have to talk with the Met Council about whether or not they wanted a, or, and MBTA, whether they want it equipped the way we would have equipped it, or if we need to do something different in terms of the specs. A couple of other things I wanted to address, I'm not sure if it's, uh, really clear in your packet. A letter went out to the, today to the Metropolitan Council from our two cities, saying, we're contemplating this merger, a transfer of our master leases for the buses, our assets in terms of our funding, our C M A grants. We would like you to, in writing, say you're gonna be okay with that, so that we can keep this moving forward, and we'll see what the response is on that. I think the verbal indications we've had is that they will accept all of those things. Gets a little complicated, because we have three transit stations, none of which are owned by the Metropolitan Council, and that's fairly unusual in the region. South Bridge, of course, is owned by the county. Uh, Eagle Creek is actually owned by the Sioux community, leased for a long term. And Marshall Road is owned by MinDOT, currently eventually totally by Scott County, so. Um, they have indicated that they are certainly open to, they're being used in the same fashion or for expanded service. Um, and land to air, by the way, is going to be operating our, of Marshall Road Transit Service, so we will have some service there fairly soon. Grand opening on August nineteenth, don't forget.
Are there other questions?
I just, um, one comment that, um, I'd like to applaud the fact that we wanted in writing from the Met Council. We're not taking their word for anything.
Did I ever tell you I worked there for four years? And so did my wife.
All right, I have a couple of questions on this. So, if this is a three-year term, time span for when we reevaluate how it's going, how are we going to evaluate after three years if it's successful or not successful? What are the, what are our thoughts on that process?
Mayor, members of the council, members of the audience, actually, I expect that you would want us to do an annual evaluation for you to see how things are going. And I think we would look at what the level of service is that's being provided to Scott County and to Shakopee specifically. In Prior Lake's case, the service that's being provided for them, what the ridership may have been, if there were increased costs, especially in the first year for startup that we didn't contemplate. So, I would expect an annual report over those three years, so that you have some basis at the end of three years to make a decision about whether or not it's going well.
Perfect. And that leads me exactly into my next question, is that once this all gets transferred and moved over, what is left, like administratively, for us to do? Is there oversight, is there, from a staff level and a council level, what happens?
What I contemplate at this point is we would have the same kind of oversight that staff for Scott County or one of the existing members have. We would want to be apprised of what's going on. If our representative isn't able to be there, or they want staff support on an issue that's of importance to Shakopee, I think our staff would be involved, but it would only be on that level, rather than the extensive level that we've had for 18 years and especially for the last seven, as we've tried to grow the service. So, I think there would still be some. I think it would be much less than we currently have today.
Councilwoman Lehman.
A hypothetical, after three years, if we opt back out of it, what happens to the equipment?
Well, that's one of the things I think that is being addressed to the, to the Met Council and is touched on in the consolidation agreement. To the extent that MBTA would support us at the Metropolitan Council in trying to get the assets back if the city of Shakopee, the city of Prior Lake wanted to reinstate their own service. Now, I will not suggest to you that that would be an easy thing to do, because part of the reason that we've had transit fund reserves, or at least I believe that I have them, is to make sure that we had operating capital. And of course, that will be gone after three years. And I think it's highly unlikely we would get any funding from the Met Council on an interim basis. So, you'd have to start a service just on whatever your M best or other receipts are. That'd be a little bit more difficult, I think, at the end of three years, but you'd have to evaluate it then.
My comment would be if we go into this, we're walking away with nothing after three years. It would be so expensive to figure out who owns what, that it would be better off to walk away.
Councilwoman Lehman.
Not that I disagree with you, but the funding that we would be receiving if we didn't have a merger would be applied to our current transit program. And the key word there is our current transit program. So, after three years, at a minimum, we better have a transit program. It just happens to be a mutual program with multiple partners through MBTA. So, at a bare minimum, after three years, we better have a program of service.
Absolutely. All right, any further questions? Could you re-clarify for me, Mr. Leek?
Yes, if I could just recap, what you're being asked this evening is to approve Resolution 7471 in its amended version on the table. And that's a resolution of the city of Shakopee approving the agreement to consolidate public transit services with Minnesota Valley Transit Authority. And again, the amendments make that conditional on approval by Prior Lake and the other members of the MBTA board, as well as approval of the steps that we'll need to take by the Metropolitan Council. So, that's the first action, resolution as amended approving the consolidation agreement. And then the second would be Resolution 7472. That's a resolution that would enter into the joint powers agreement to become a full member of Minnesota Valley Transit Authority. And again, with a modification, that that be contingent on approval of that consolidation agreement by all of the parties that I've just outlined.
All right, perfect. So, take 7471 first. Do we have a motion? Councilwoman Lehman.
Offer Resolution 7471, I'm going to try to do this out of memory, to approve the consolidation with MBTA as amended, contingent on our other member bodies also approving it.
Okay, good. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Councilwoman Mokel.
That includes the amendment in there with the Met Council approving it in writing.
I'll second.
Okay. All right, any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Now, item 7472 as amended. Councilwoman Whiting.
I'll offer Resolution 7472, a resolution of the city of Shakopee authorizing entering into a joint powers agreement to become a full member of the Minnesota Valley Transit Authority, contingent on the approval of all the other members of the MBTA board and the Met Council in writing.
Do I have a second on that?
I'll second.
So, my Councilwoman Luce. Any suggestions? Councilwoman Lehman.
I think that has to be conditioned on the other members of our current agreement accepting the 7471.
Contingent on Prior Lake's.
Prior Lake and Scott County agreeing to our consolidation.
Okay, you accept that?
Yes.
All right.
Sorry, I missed it. If you pass this motion simply contingent on execute, full execution of the consolidation agreement, that would be sufficient for this motion.
I approve that language.
I will second it. All right, all right. So, we have 7472 as amended. Any further discussion?
I just have a couple of comments for the public that going into this, if we don't in three years, our transit's going to be broke, as is everybody else's. We go into this bigger group and we have a better chance of getting something out of the Met Council. If we don't do this, we're not going to get anything out of the Met Council.
Well, and it's not just Met Council as well. I mean, we're going to provide a lot better and a wider breadth of service for all the residents and have a lot better options for Shakopee, Prior Lake, Scott County residents to be able to get, add a lot more services. And so, it's, it gives us a lot more negotiating power by being part of a large group, but it also gives a lot more service at the same time. So, it's a, I think it's a great thing for, for everybody.
Better set.
Connectivity key.
Exactly. All right, any further discussion? All right, seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously.
Thank you all for your work on this and for your attention. I appreciate it.
You as well. This is a big, big deal. So, thank you and thank you, Ms. Kansier, as well for all everybody's work. All right, item 7B, which we changed from chamber policy committee signed regulation to form-based code. It turned, just so everybody knows, 7B, everybody who, but one person that was going to be here for this meeting, or should be here to discuss the signed ordinance, is on vacation or out of town. So, it didn't really work out very well to have a conversation about what Chamber was looking for from that side. But what their thoughts are, are more of a, going toward a different type of categorization of land use for the sign ordinance, which is more form-based code or zoning. And so, we're going to have a little primer on what that means as opposed to what we've got going on right now. And Mr. Leek is going to move with that. Was that a fair introduction?
Sure. As, as long as I can find what I'm looking for.
And this is just educational introduction kind of thing for council and not for significant discussion tonight or anything like that, just an understanding as to what it means.
I've been curious to know what form-based zoning is.
Forever? You know what?
No, just since I heard about it.
Michael's had about 36 hours to prepare this, so I'm very pleased that he was able to find, well, at least gotten this far anyway with what he's prepared.
I promise I did share it to our temporary shared drive.
No stick figures.
We're going to start seeing sewer.
Yeah, exactly. There's a lot of these 18 sewer videos on there.
Oh, dear God, no.
What I'm going to do is just rush through a bunch of the slides, because I only want to introduce this to you.
Do you want, do you want to switch some things around, or are you good?
No, we're good. I just need to, okay.
You don't need to go through all 53 slides.
How do I?
You made 53 slides in 36 hours?
Okay.
No. Planners don't do that. Anyone know how I get this onto the other screen?
Drag it over.
Yeah, can you drag it across?
Doesn't seem to.
Yeah, that's always the fun part here. Let's see.
Thank you.
I think we did it. Now, let's see if we can run a little bigger. Maybe just a slight reduction. Let's see what we can do here. Hang on.
Is it codes or zoning?
Zoning.
What do you think? Does that work, guys? It's kind of bald.
Sure.
Is that okay?
It'll be fine. So, credit to the American Planning Association Pennsylvania chapter for providing a free PowerPoint presentation. It is alternately referred to as form-based zoning and form-based codes, depending on what you're looking at. And I'll try to just touch on some of the high points and then just some of the photos that give you an indication of what it's intended to address. So, their agenda was to talk about what form-based codes are, and we will do that very briefly. How does that compare with a conventional zoning code, which is what Shakopee has? They go into a lot of detail in their presentation about how to develop that kind of code and what the options are for implementing it. I'm not going to spend any time on that this evening, because the first step for you is going to be if you want additional information and discussion about this kind of code and whether it should be implemented, we'll bring something further back. And I think the greatest potential applicability is going to be in the downtown First Avenue area. That's one of the logical reasons for introducing this topic, because you are going to be talking about that area tonight. So, what are they? Basically, if I'm being unkind to folks like me, planners as a profession tend to like older cities and the mix of public spaces, the opportunities for interaction, and the aesthetic interest of those communities. Form-based codes are a way to try and replicate that kind of development pattern, that opportunity for interaction among people and for public spaces through a code. Instead of placing an emphasis on segregating uses so that there are no disharmonies between them, it really focuses more on what the community sees as what it wants its city to look like in various areas. And working from that, it then develops based on the kinds of things that you want to regulate. We'll get into that. So, they summarized it here very simply. In traditional zoning, it's all about land uses. There's only a little bit, like our material standards in our existing code, that goes to the question of how things look, how they function as buildings, and so on. In form-based codes, it's really all about how things look, how they work together, and less about land use. Now, that doesn't mean you're going to have a structure that has heavy industrial as well as residential in it, but you may have greater flexibility than you would under a traditional zoning code. When planners talk about form, they talk about all these things, the types of buildings, the building heights, the frontage lines. In our existing Conference of Plan, if you look at the sections that talk about the downtown riverfront corridor, you'll see some discussion about some of those factors, block size, street and lane width, curb radii, and so forth. Just very briefly, the reason we have the kind of zoning now is because of the industrial revolution in the 19th century, there were a lot of really impactful uses. And what's called Euclidean zoning, based on a fairly famous case, is an attempt to segregate those kinds of impacts away from where people live or where they go to school. And you see some of the lovely photographs of what they have. Some of you are nearly my age, and you remember the photos of the Ohio River Valley, Pittsburgh, and so on, even in the 1970s, and what they looked like. The challenge is to go from what's currently approved, and we've had some discussion here about we have seas of parking lots, most of it's not used, to something that uses up less impervious surface area, but still provides for adequate parking for the use of businesses and residences, but provides a more community-oriented look. The photo on the right is fairly typical of what you would expect to see arising out of a form-based code. And it is the kind of thing that our neighbor Chaska is doing a study about and has done some previous studies. Now, the, the real trick with form-based zoning is it, it does require that as a community, you have a specific vision for what you want some part or all of your community to look like. And if you took a look at the rest of this presentation in detail, you'll see that the planners in talking about the three communities that they highlighted, highlighted how difficult it can be to hold to that vision and keep moving down the road to having this kind of code. Where can you use it? You can use it anywhere you choose to, new growth areas, existing neighborhoods, limited situations. The First Avenue downtown area, I think, is an example of that. Some communities have looked at doing this on a wholesale basis. Our planner Alex Sharp mentioned that he was in a community that did form-based zoning, but only for signs, and it really focused on the size of the buildings, the speeds of the roadways adjacent to them, and what that meant in terms of signage. And we may get into that discussion when we talk about the chamber. So, I'm going to zip past a bunch of this and just get us to some of the photos. Whoops, can I go back? So, they highlighted the community of Woolrich Township, New Jersey, excuse me. It is not like Shakopee at all, obviously. It's like Shakopee was perhaps in the 1980s to some extent, but we're not like that now. And they developed a set of plans related to infrastructure, how that gets extended, and then how they implement their ideas about what the community should look like through that process. Woodbury, New Jersey, by contrast, had a business district redevelopment plan. That's a little bit more analogous to what you're talking about with respect to 101. And you can see the differences on the bottom here between what they had under traditional zoning and some of the kinds of changes that they wanted to see in the appearance and the functionality of their downtown district. Walkable areas, less impervious surface, probably narrower roadways, other provisions for parking than simply all on-street parking, all-surface parking. And you can see in the design sketch, the indication of a greater amount of density. And I should note, you're probably aware that the Met Council is merrily putting together its policy plans for the 2018 comprehensive plan process. Its housing policy plan is out, and that is a document that really does talk about communities in the Southern County metro area taking a look at higher density in some of its areas. So, it's something we'll have to take a look at in any event. There's a lot of detail in their slideshow about what they specifically were looking at. And then their third community was Mount Holly, New Jersey. They had some buildings that had some interesting architecture, but as you can see, a lot of impervious surface area, especially in the lower-left corner, reminds me of a couple of buildings I saw when I was up in northern Minnesota a couple of weeks ago. Parking lot everywhere, even if the building was an interesting one. They had a mixture of zoning that they were dealing with under their traditional code and limitations on setbacks, frontages, and so on. And they started identifying where there were opportunities to make some changes. This is actually an area that's zoned business. I was surprised when I first saw that slide, but what you can see is, a little bit like our County Road 101, there's not much other than pavement between the buildings and the roadway. And not as inviting an appearance as it could be. I'm sure perfectly adequate and functional. There is in fact a sidewalk there, so that's a good thing. But apparently- Um, but apparently not what they were looking for. And you can see to the right, an example of the kind of thing that they want to encourage. Um, I see they even have canopies for people indicated as a potential. Uh, the lessons learned, I think, are really key. The first is that if you're going to begin to tackle something that gets away from simply separating uses based on district, that you need to think hard about what your vision is for the areas that you might want to do something differently. You have to have a good idea of what the market is or what the market might create if you make these changes. That's a part of the discussion that you're going to have tonight. I wouldn't suggest that you go into doing form-based zoning without having some idea of what the market is today under the current circumstances and what positive or negative changes you might see if you changed your way of regulating within a certain area. Um, whether it works and the extent to which it works is a little bit dependent on the development pace that we have. Fortunately, we're in an upswing to some extent, and you've actually had new development on the corridor, so that's a good thing. Uh, the other thing that's a little bit more difficult about it is, you know, we're no longer dealing with setbacks and an impervious surface limitation. We may be dealing things with, what's the distance from the curb to the front of the building? Is the entrance located so that it's easily accessible? Is there enough room on the sidewalk for secondary uses that you might want to encourage? If you've got a restaurant, for example, will they have space for outdoor tables, those kinds of things? So that's just a brief overview. Hopefully, that's of some interest, and I think the intent is if you have interest in this, we'll spend some more time with you and go into the details a little bit more, but give you something to talk about in the context of downtown.
Which is actually, Mr. Mayor and Council, what we wanted to do. This is a segue to talking about downtown plan and your budget for next year. So unless someone's got an immediate response right now, I'd just like to, I'd like to talk with you further about where we're going.
Is, is there a way that, uh, we can look at that whole slides- slideshow online?
Yes, uh, we can certainly provide that to you. Uh, I'd be happy to do that, actually.
Can, before we go too far, can I ask Mr. Leek a question? Real quick. With, with what you just went through, what sort of applicability is there to Shakopee? Like what kind of things could council envision using that type of, of coding for? Or should we think about like what, what's a good use of that that we could have, just so we have a vision of where it could go?
So probably the most obvious place is in and around the downtown. You've got a historic development pattern. It is the type of development pattern, um, that most people who look at form-based codes are trying to replicate to some extent. There are, however, some deficiencies from a certain perspective. You want to put tables outside your restaurant in the downtown area here. It's a pretty limited area, and I know we've had some brief discussion about how you could get around that. Um, so I, I would say, looking at it in an area like downtown, especially where you still have some character of the community or where you want to replicate some of the character that may be gone in the First Avenue corridor, where you do have some historic structures, most of them are residential, is a place where you might want to take a look at it. Um, I'm not so sure, as you look at potential annexation areas in Jackson Township, that that's the most beneficial place to look at it. Um, you could, certainly. But I think in the downtown First Avenue corridor, where you're really looking to build interest and traffic in that area, make it really appealing, is the kind of area where you'd look at. What is it we want to see in this area? So it may be as simple as, you know, I think we ought to have housing adjacent to the Minnesota River that's five stories tall, so that even though people aren't going to swim in it, they've got a great view, and they may want to pay a little bit more, and we like having those people downtown to support our businesses. So that would be my initial thought, anyway.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, we wanted to talk about downtown and downtown plans, downtown studies. One of the things I found, uh, was interesting was, uh, some downtown issues that I think shouldn't be a surprise, uh, to any of you now. Uh, perceived problems that we have, First Avenue traffic, parking issues. We've got vacant, decaying, underutilized buildings. Got a lack of a tenant mix in the downtown. There's really, there's no like anchor or traffic builder. And there's really kind of a lack of a downtown spirit or has been. Solutions for that? Well, we've got First Avenue, uh, movement, traffic access. The River Bridge is going to certainly change traffic patterns in the downtown. It's going to add, uh, back some of the things that were solved with the downtown mini-bypass. We need to provide for more parking that's more centrally located and closer to a retail core. We need to improve physical attractiveness and appearances along First Avenue. Need to provide for additional retailing opportunities, keeping the downtown compact and walkable. We need to improve a, a sense of arrival, and, and specifically signage is what's talked about for that, for commercial image. Downtown physical amenities, street furniture, landscaping and lighting. And then finally, uh, the Minnesota River is, is really not being fully utilized for pedestrian opportunity. So do these things look familiar to you? This came from a downtown revitalization study done by Westwood in June of nineteen eighty-four. And so these are not issues that are new to us at all. We've looked at these over the years. I had Michael go through and find, and I, I don't think this is comprehensive, but we've had a number of studies done. The first three, two in nineteen eighty-six, one nineteen eighty-seven, I think led to the downtown streetscape, uh, work that was done, which Bruce has talked with you about. Now, it's old, it's tired, and it's in need of, of renovation. And then in June nineteen ninety-six, we had a retail, uh, evaluation done. And I think that was what the council at that time used as rationale for, uh, requiring the two blocks that are on the north side of First Avenue that became River City Center. So we've had other discussions over the years, but as, as I said, we've, we've looked at this and a lot of the things that we identified years ago in Shakopee, we're still dealing with. So we're happy that it's something that you're interested in looking at again. We need to talk about how we provide for that. Now, as you'll recall, earlier this year, we got the, uh, report from, uh, uh, Hoyington Kegler Group. We did a number of, uh, meetings on that with the community, with you as the council. And we came up with a number of goals on that. I made copies of this part of it. Uh, because this is a little tough to read, I'm going to pass these out to you. Hopefully, folks at home will be able to, uh, see those a little better that way. As you recall, you adopted these earlier this year after the EDAC, the Planning Commission, and the Park and Rec Advisory Board looked at it and prioritized it. That's what the votes are on the right-hand column there. But we talked about a number of things that were either physical in nature, or were marketing, or were part of a vision statement. So with that, um, there is a, a number of, uh, I think probably because the park board voted, uh, strongly to do the walkability, the access with the park, that sort of thing, those ranked highly. But I think all of these are important ones and certainly are all within top fifteen out of the forty or so items that we identified. Some of them could be consolidated or moved together. For example, um, number two and number thirteen are probably pretty similar there. Active living, walking cycle, um, walkability and, and biking, uh, sort of thing. And then number twelve and number seven are very similar when it talks about housing sorts of things. But those are all items which we've got a study done. We need to talk about a plan. Now, Bruce and Jamie and Michael and, and you as a council have identified a number of things that we could probably spend, uh, money on, and we need to get some prioritization from you in terms of how we would, uh, put money together for that. For example, we've talked about parking as an issue. Bruce has, I think, in the two thousand fifteen, uh, CIP, uh, this, Second and Lewis, this is the parking lot across from Bill's Targary, a parking lot rehab. We've also had though people say, we need a parking ramp. Uh, Bruce's, uh, analysis on that figures you about twenty-five thousand dollars per space if you're going to have a ramp. That would be seventy-five spaces there at Second and Lewis. Is that the top priority for us right now? Well, that's something that you need to help identify on that. In addition to building it, parking lots, parking ramps, excuse me, are expensive to maintain.
What's the life expectancy of a parking ramp?
My experience, and this has been from a number of years ago, is usually thirty to forty years. But that also means after about ten years, you're just doing some fairly heavy maintenance on them. Accessibility ramps, we know those, none of these meet current standards. That's about two hundred thousand dollars. Street lighting, and this would be including the Corten Steel poles, which are rusting right now, and then the downtown concrete poles, which were put in the nineteen eighties, which a lot of them are, uh, spalling and need to be replaced. You could almost figure three and quarters of a million dollars there. Tree grates, pavers, landscaping, four hundred to four hundred fifty thousand dollars. Best estimate to provide increased walking accessibility from the downtown to Huber Park or to areas north of one oh one is probably a million and a half dollars. Um, there are other things that we've talked about. We had a, a meeting earlier, and we had, uh, staff, and we invited Laura from Main Street Shakopee and John, um, um, Crooks from Shakopee Public Utilities. We, we identified a number of other things. Spuck is looking at doing some water line replacements. That's going to be necessary for, uh, redevelopment of things north of one oh one. They're also, as you're aware, doing, uh, a generator, excuse me, not a generator, but a substation down by the former Dairy Queen down there. They're excited about that. That's going to improve the dependability, and we're going to have a fewer downtown power outages as a result of that. They're putting money in that. I've also heard a desire to, uh, put some sort of identifying canopy over one oh one, perhaps at the walk, crosswalk at Somerville Street, just so that people identify that's a pedestrian way we can get people across. Uh, Laura, I think, was very excited about, uh, some of the things that she was able to do last week at Derby Days. You'll saw, you saw the petty cabs, and I think we had some people that helped power those, uh, in the downtown area. But it got people at least familiar with the underpass, I mean, the Bevo over here, that it's not well-located in terms of visibility. It's two blocks out of the way for a lot of people who want to make a direct beeline, uh, to Huber Park. But those are the sorts of things that we need to do a better job of identifying and talking about. Costs that we haven't identified on that. There's other things, riverbank stabilization. This is just in the area around Huber Park, uh, but Jamie has numbers in there from two thousand seven that today would be about two and a half million dollars if you're going to be putting in riprap, uh, riverbank stabilization, and then some amenity sorts of things, overlooks and concrete walkways that would, uh, play up to its potential, uh, as an attraction for pedestrians. The railroad, the quiet zone, is something that you've identified. It's really critical to make some decisions on that, because there's going to be a lot of development that is not going to likely want to, uh, settle in the downtown area until we get that resolved. We haven't heard back from Union Pacific, uh, excuse me, we have heard back, but we haven't gotten the financials, put it that way. But right now, figuring street closures, signal upgrades, probably in the three and a half million dollar range. Don't know how much they will participate with that, but that's another, um, cost estimate on that. Just in talking with Main Street Shakopee, one of the things that they would like to do is downtown, uh, bike ra- uh, racks uh, and get some better signage for the river trails to identify where the downtown is and the amenities that we offer there. Our management intern is working with, uh, Scott County right now uh, for potentially up to fifteen thousand dollars in grant monies that would help improve walkability, bikability. And one of the things we're looking at is, is signage along the new Minnesota River Trail. You can start as, as far east as the Bloomington Ferry Bridge, have a sign, you know, downtown Shakopee, three and a half miles, that sort of thing. So we might have some, uh, potential funding on that. But again, all this talks about the need to, we've, we've had studies, we need to put together some plans. Um, the quiet zone itself's probably going to be about thirty-five thousand dollars. One of the things that we did in terms of exploring what further we might do is talked with Hoyington Kegler.
It's three point five million, not thirty-five thousand.
I said, study is, yeah, the study is about thirty-five thousand, so. But we talked with Hoyington Kegler as far as what they, uh, would do. That's kind of a phase two to the initial study. Coincidentally, they did a, uh, study for our neighbor Chaska in two thousand twelve. And they did a lot of things that really would be what we'd like to look at here in terms of how do you connect neighborhoods to other neighborhoods? How do you improve, uh, transportation and feel of community and that sort of thing? We talked, they would do something similar for us in terms of, we know that we need to do some alley redesign. Uh, that's things that Bruce could probably do, but I know he's also up to his ears right now doing other sorts of things uh, in terms of design for development and just maintenance. We've got the Second and Lewis parking lot, we've got the downtown streetscaping, those, again, you know, the street lighting and tree grates, sidewalk ramps, bike ramps, signage, landscaping, those sorts of things. They would do something like that or could do something like that for you here in Shakopee. The question is, are you interested in doing something like that now? That's really going to be what it's going to take to identify what those costs are, so you can start to nail those down. We've got the two thousand fifteen budget we're going to be talking about with, at the next meeting. We need to think about these sorts of things. Potentially, that could be a hundred thousand dollar study, excuse me, design and study to do all that. We could do some of it in-house, but that's not without cost. We have our own people that we have to, and probably have to, uh, farm a lot of that out. But we need to have you be thinking about those sorts of things as you're putting your budget together for two thousand fifteen. Do you want to make investments to start moving ahead on some of these items? So with that, um, I think, of the one that I handed out, Hoyington felt that that, something like what you see there for the Chaska study could identify or could help to address, uh, one and two and eight through eleven and twelve, uh, excuse me, thirteen through fifteen. Most of those then, as they say, give you a really good springboard for getting some of the other studies done. Michael alluded to the fact that, uh, the Metropolitan Council has some housing, uh, studies or some housing goals that they've identified, and that's going to put more, uh, back on the cities to determine how we're going to improve housing. Question is for you, does that mean in the downtown area, you're going to focus on affordable housing only? Or as Michael noted, you could get some higher-end housing that would be, uh, more supportive of downtown businesses and things like that? Is that what you're ready to do? So this is, uh, setting the table for you in terms of a discussion. I'd be interested in any sort of reaction that you have on this. It will help us talk about or prepare for, um, our discussion in a couple of weeks. I know we've talked, uh, with you as far as what you want to do for investments in individual properties in the downtown. We've got site acquisition that could be done, as you've got, uh, vacant or underutilized properties available that could be used for development purposes in the future. But I'm interested in knowing what your responses are on these.
Ms. Lehman?
I'm kind of the opinion that the old downtown area businesses need to be the specialized business. You know, the bike shop. You don't have that up by Walmart or up by Cub. Ice cream shop. Ice cream shop that you can actually sit in and have a float or whatever. Dumb tire, the motorcycle gal that's moving in down here. That type of stuff, that's not really a competitor with the big box stuff that everybody seems to run to for the daily things. But yet it still has to be the type of businesses that people want to utilize. Or, in our case, are forced to utilize because the other areas of town don't offer them. So I'm kind of focusing on that. Now, how we get there is, you know, the hard part, but that's kind of what I'm thinking. The question I have on the parking lot, four hundred fifty thousand is, that must be like a reconstruct that parking lot.
I believe a hundred and fifty thousand is what the estimate was on that one.
Wasn't our list up there four fifty for parking at Second and Lewis?
Uh, four.
Was it one fifty? Okay.
Four fifty would be for paving, landscaping, grates, I mean, some streetscaping sorts of things.
Okay, so the, the parking lot is, you know, what's the life expectancy on that if we improve that? I mean, it's kind of like routine maintenance. Like the parking lot right out here, we just did that, so. Put the gravel stuff down. Is that what you're proposing to do at the parking lot, or?
Bruce, what's the? Yeah, the Second and Lewis parking lot, what is it that would be done and what would the life expectancy be?
Um, we need to look at the vituinous, obviously, that's pretty low.
Need to repave it, but I also know there's some curb and gutter, some drainage issues that we need to address. One thought I had is maybe we go with a concrete pavement, which is also longer lasting. Concrete is getting closer to vituinous. It's something we look at as an alternative. And we've always looked at concrete alleys too, potentially, as drainage ways, so that's something we'd look at. But definitely the parking lot needs to, the pavement needs to be redone.
Would we do that alley next to that parking lot at the same time?
That was one thought I had, that it might make sense to do them both.
Right.
I know we have some interest, some, some utility companies are coming in there. They need some more new lines. And I believe it's from Spencer to Lewis, which would include that alley.
Okay, because in my, my mind, I'm trying to prioritize. If we don't have parking, we're kind of, kind of really putting ourselves in a bad position, and parking has always been an issue. So that's, that's one that we're going to have to probably bite the bullet and do as soon as we can, just so we have it.
See, let's talk about that for just a second. In my opinion, parking is one of the last things that we want to address.
Okay.
Because we could only hope to have major parking issues downtown. And I don't want to put money into, I mean, we've got to fix the lot that's out here without an issue, without a question. But thinking about parking beyond just that, I think, is putting the cartway before the horse on any of those kinds of things. Because we, I mean, people can park a couple of blocks away and walk a little bit, and that's okay. And we've got a ton of city parking all around here that we can much better utilize through signage and other things. Councilor Whiting.
Well, let me, let me just throw this at you for the point of discussion. If you look at items number two, eight, nine, ten, and eleven, if we, just for discussion, if we took out from Holmes to Lewis all the parking downtown and had another parking lot to put all those cars in, we could increase walkability, we could create a, you know, we'd have to do number eight with the improved parking, but we create that outdoor plaza feeling for downtown events. We create outdoor dining. We could focus on the downtown core and create an experience by having that space to do all those things, by removing that parking, but we'd have to replace it somewhere else.
Well, would we necessarily have to remove the entire parking or just get rid of diagonal parking? I mean, going to, because the other pieces, you could also have a bike lane if you got rid of diagonal. That's, that's, it's kind of the wasted space, but yes, you need the parking. So to me, it's just, you know, coming from a different downtown, we, we were parallel parking. So it's just shifting that and using that space for either the outdoor dining platforms that Laura brought up during our Main Street or making bike lanes.
Well, you know, you could do it all, quite a bit of this by removing it all. I mean, let's, let's, if we're going to scramble some eggs just talking about it, we might as well throw that out too. Just a thought.
Mr. Mayor. You can't see her in the back, so we got her come up.
Sorry about that. Samantha DiMaggio, Economic Development Coordinator. I think that's one thing that we talked to Chaska, or to Hoysington Kegler about earlier is, one thing that they were doing for Chaska is really analyzing where they had their parking, how much that was being used. If they needed to put in two hour parking signs or, you know, try to have different alternatives for parking. I think that might be something that, not that I want to say we'd definitely need another study, but I don't know right now which parking lots are being used the most, which ones are underutilized, which businesses are having issues with people being there all day. You know, I don't, I don't think that's something that we know, and so that's one of the things that they said they could do for us in the study would be to identify the parking that we have now. If it's not, maybe one parking lot is way too big and we're not using it enough, then they could create a green space out of it and move that parking and put it somewhere else that also isn't being utilized. You know, I think that's one thing that maybe should be looked at for future planning instead of us trying to be the experts in picking and choosing. I wish I could pick a winner every time, but as we all know, I can't, so.
You do, we all know you do.
Most of the time. I'm fifty fifty.
And that's a good point. I mean, one of the things that you find with downtown parking is that it's usually enough, it's just never in the right location. And usually what happens is that somebody wants parking in front of their business, even though they themselves would be parking three doors down in front of someone else's business to take up their space. We could do a license plate study. That's probably not something that is really high tech, but you can do that and analyze how many people have the same plate there over eight hours or two hours and just see what your turnover sort of thing is. The one other item I wanted to mention and give credit to Laura on was that she's actually done a survey of the number of businesses that we have in the downtown area. One of Bruce's people was able to put this on a map for her, but the numbers there show the different businesses that are there. And it's a surprising number that we have up and down the First Avenue corridor. So I wanted to get that out there. She's done a really, actually a job, and we're happy to have her help us with this, so.
That's great.
Other questions, comments, thoughts?
I've got a couple of comments. You, like you alluded to with people parking in front of other people's businesses. That's just bad taste. I mean, people have to learn. You don't park in front of your business, you don't park in front of somebody else's business. Park in a parking lot, walk the distance. You're there all day. It's not necessary. The other thing is with the temporary table areas, I'd be in favor of that because that way the business that's doing it is going to be giving up their parking. You know, they could give up a couple of parking spaces in the summertime when they could use the table spaces outside. And when they want, come winter, nobody's going to eat outside. A couple Eskimos maybe, but, you know. They can put away the temp area, you know, the platforms, whatever, and reutilize their parking. That would make way more sense to start with, you know. Do it as a test study, and if it works, then, then come up with an idea to rescape the downtown.
Couple other points I wanted to point out that I liked was the bikability and the, like you talked about, the destination businesses. We're not going to pick and choose businesses, but they're going to, they're going to come to our downtown. I like the, the site acquisition part of it so that we can start bundling some sites. And the streetscape thing, I think, is something that we're going to have to start looking at, and the parking lots and alleys. But I think that study, I think, is going to be necessary to tell us what is the most important from their point of view.
That's where they flipped out, parallel parking, and then they put in, did you want to put that up there too? You don't want to lose your page.
Could you say that again?
Um, so part of this is just, if you look at the, where what normally would be diagonal parking, you're talking about a bike lane there in the yellow next to the parallel parking. So you'd have bike ability and walkability as well.
Which pretty much fits in with what we agreed with Scott County of the trail coming over and down sixty-nine and utilizing Home Street and stuff. To the tunnel, to the DNR trail, and I think signage is going to be key. If they make good, nice signing, I, I think that's going to help out tremendously. And I think that group of people that utilize it to get to that DNR trail is going to spread the word of that tunnel, and hopefully that helps us.
I think we talked about that while I was still on Park Board, so that's been a while.
Yeah.
I don't know where that one's at. Mark, could you go to the map that I was on earlier? Since Kathy messed up my page.
Oh, Mark.
There it is. When I think about what needs to be done in the downtown area and what we as council can influence and accomplish, this is the map, I think this is my favorite map that they did for the entire study. This is the map that I think about as to what we can do, because each of these individual districts have very different needs and wants and, and goals. Wow, thank you. And so in my head, I think obviously one of the first ones we start with is the downtown commercial district, and that's fairly well identified there as to what area it is. And then we put in the CIP for twenty sixteen for some streetscape work and things like that. In my head, that's one of the things that needs to be done first is through the twenty fifteen calendar year. Have community meetings and talk to folks about what it is that we want to get done so we can get a plan put together and do it twenty sixteen. And maybe it takes longer than that, I don't know, but have it done for twenty sixteen. So that's one of the things that I think is key. Michael in the past has talked about this downtown residential district. There's some really good things that we can do with that for not only improving the, helping people improve structures and incentivizing people for improving structures so we get more people down here. But we can also, there are some really big lots in here as well, and we can allow secondary structures on those lots to help improve density and things like that in this area. So that's another key thing that we can do that doesn't take a lot in those areas. And then the third thing, at least I think that we should focus on, is this West End Riverfront Housing District, but more importantly, this East End Riverfront Housing District. For what Michael was just talking about is get more density and more folks living down there. I know we have a, a, a very large crop of baby boomers in, in Shakopee that are looking for high-end housing to live in as their next, their next phase, that they've got a house somewhere and they're going to be in their sixties and they don't want to have a house to take care of, and they want to have a condo or they want to have a townhome or something like that in Shakopee to, to live in. And I really think that this, we need to work as a council to aggregate some properties and, and buy and put together sections of, of area to keep, to put together enough land to have a, a building of that stature on in those areas and have that back up against the river and overlooking the river so that we not only have folks living down here to feed these businesses, but have it so it's connected through the park into this downtown area and have it. So in my head, those are the three big things that I want to work on. Is the downtown commercial district primarily, continue what we're doing now, but streetscape improvements. So we have more amenities, benches, picnic tables, trees, things like that, and more space to walk. Improve the residential district down here, and then work on a plan for getting more high-rise housing for not only retiring folks, but as well, we need to get some more low-income housing in Shakopee, and there can be a good combination of that in there, so. Councilman Lehman.
Since the list of the downtown commercial district is in the seven to eight million dollar range, and then we don't know what the East End Riverfront Housing District's going to cost, where's your funding source for this?
Well, in my head, the downtown commercial district is not a seven to eight million dollar project by any means. I mean, the streetscape portion of that, we put two million in the CIP for twenty six, for twenty sixteen. And I think that, that between that two and four million for improving the streetscapes, and I'm not saying we have to do a complete redo of everything for the downtown area, but we need to have a good idea as to what down the, down the line it needs to be. It could be phased in, or we could do it all at once. So I, I definitely think that there are.
I thought the consensus was for the downtown commercial district that they'd really like the train whistle to go away, which could potentially be another three and a half million dollars on top of the two million dollars, so. So we're up to five and a half, and I'm sure there's a parking lot and some alleys and to be determined infrastructure needs that we saw on our list, which we don't have a number for, which I'm sure are going to be at least two million dollars. So now we're up to eight, eight million.
Uh, I'm not up to eight million. You may be up to eight million in your, in your side of things, but.
I mean, it's, we've already discussed the train whistle, and we know that the cost is going to be roughly three, three point five million if they don't participate.
Uh, we've discussed it, absolutely, but we have not by any means said that we're doing that. And I don't think that, at this point, I'm not willing to spend three point five million on a train whistle. That's not my, my higher, much higher priority is, is getting this area looking good, livable, walkable, much above quiet zone. I definitely want to get a quiet zone, but that's not in my, my need category personally.
Okay, so we were asked earlier tonight of, you know, start looking at twenty fifteen budget. We were given a list of items here and with a price tag on them and try to prioritize some of them. And if we can't maintain what we already have, we shouldn't be thinking about buying new. So I'm thinking if we've got a parking lot that's, the pavement's destroyed on, we should probably fix what we already own. It sets a pretty bad example to leave something continuously go to pot and start working on something new.
But that's why we pushed it up on the CIP too.
So we, the question was, what do we want to look at in twenty fifteen?
I'm not saying that I want to look at doing all those things in twenty fifteen, but we have to have a plan. We have to put it together as to, this is what we want to accomplish. So like the, the East End and the West End housing things, that's not something that gets done overnight. It's something that needs.
It could be five, six years.
Yeah.
You're, you're, you know, you can buy the property, hold the land, and until you find an investor willing to make that commitment, you know.
You couldn't be more correct.
So, I mean, you're, you're spending a lot of tax dollars on acquiring something that you don't know if ever is going to come to fruition. So it's kind of risky.
And in my view, if you're not going to go down on the East End and buy everything, don't bother because you've got a lot of aging homes. No developer's going to put up a big fancy building in that neighborhood. Now, if he's got fair ground to work with and a riverfront, fine, but not the way it sits now. And I'm not knocking the homes down there.
Right.
They're older homes.
Right.
They've been kept up to the best that they can.
Well, and you know, we saw Rar's plans, you know, and nothing wrong with Rar's plan for the future and stuff. They've got a couple of issues with some current residents that they have to work out, and, and they may work that out, and they may come back with a good plan that, that fits with an industrial area in that, that corner, which is where it is across the street, which makes sense. But we, you know, we can say we're okay with that, but really, we're not the, the lead.
We don't own the land.
You know, other folks have to do this.
Right.
Could I, could I interject?
Please.
As you know, finance people love to bring good news wherever they go. Last year was the first year in a number of years the city of Shakopee actually experienced increased value. The city was able to take on an increased levy with minimal impact to the property taxpayers because of that increase. That's thirteen to fourteen, okay? Just recently received a set of numbers from Scott County. As a city, you will be looking at a thirteen percent total market value growth. That is the one area we've talked about quite a bit as we've gone into this topic of, we realize you have a high priority for dealing with downtown, that there are projects that you as a council want to move ahead with. What I want to bring to you this evening is that you are in that upswing where you have the ability to deal with an levy increase with minimal impact to your property taxpayers With minimal impact to your property taxpayers. Because you have growth. And I can show you the whole area of Scott County, it's a pretty growth-based area. But you as a community have one that I'd put in the terms of really a positive factor. I just wanted to bring that piece forward because I don't wanna get into a lot of details, because it's eight thirty at night, walking through property tax lobbies is not. Anyone's idea of fun.
Oh, come on now.
Come on.
All yours, Julie.
Well, I know. I just, I just, one of the things that we talked about last year at the budget, let me get some of this a little. Matt, I'm gonna let you intercede here, what's your question?
My question, if you go back to your chart is, they went up by four hundred million and all that is on residential.
What, what we're dealing with when you say it's all on residential.
If you wanna put your chart back up, there it shows that.
Okay. Hang on here.
The CI though.
Sixteen percent increase in residential.
No, but look at the CI increase when it comes back.
There are, because there's, there's also the CI issue here, okay?
Your, yeah, but your numbers show.
Let me, let me pop up another chart here, cause you know, again, nothing says fun like charts.
Can we just utilize the first one you had?
Well, this is kind of a summary, it goes thirteen, fourteen, fourteen, fifteen. Okay, okay, but you want, you wanna go by classification, okay, I gotcha. And which chart, fourteen or fifteen?
The one that you just had before this one.
The one I had just before this.
Showed the fifteen.
Right here. That one?
Yeah.
Okay?
Third lineup from the bottom.
Third lineup from the bottom. The residential.
Four to two point four four zero.
Residential improved, but if you look across the board. You've got some, some material numbers in other category, categories also.
Other barely changed, manufactured housing did change, CI. Up a little bit, nowhere near as what the residential did.
That the values.
I don't think that this shows though, the new businesses, correct?
And, and that's one of the factors that I'm also gonna bring forward.
A lot of our new businesses aren't paying taxes.
There's, well, there's nothing.
Completely wrong.
Oh, we're giving it back.
No, that is completely wrong.
Not correct.
The vast majority of the new, new construction in, in the city of Shakopee is all one hundred percent non-incentivized. It's lots and lots and lots of stuff. You look at the map.
Ones that didn't have an abatement agreement.
Right.
Right now, data card is our abatement. Their abatement amount in twenty fourteen, in total from the city of Shakopee will be eleven thousand dollars. Twenty fifteen, eleven thousand five hundred dollars. We're not talking extraordinary abatements here. But I'm saying.
Go to the one that you're going to.
When you, when you can, and I'm gonna route these out to you in the um, activity report this week too, so that you can kinda take a look at these and ponder them a little. That's kind of it in summary, but the piece that I want to have you think about a little. Because I think this is a consideration as you are considering, where do you wanna go on twenty fifteen? You're in a very fortunate position in that you are in growth as Ms. DiMaggio referenced, we don't have the new commercial industrial even on these numbers. Because they would've had to have value at January one and they weren't, they weren't there. That's growth that is pending in your future. So you are looking at growth and as you look at where you've been in the past couple of years. If you take a look at last year's levy, you had a general levy of fifteen, seven ninety-three. You approved a, a first time, two thousand six, a debt levy, three forty-three. And we increased the fire building debt levy to one seventy-five. It gave you a total levy of sixteen, three twelve, one seventy-nine. That puts you at a tax rate around forty-one. When, I, I wish I had the new factors, you know, that work paper I typically show you that says here's a value, here's a. Scott County's working on that, we're gonna hopefully have it by next week, we're gonna try, but. You have a margin here for what we could look at for twenty fifteen. As far as if this is a priority for you. We already know that there's an increase to the CIP based on the program Mr. Lonie has brought forward. There may be uh, requests for some of the EDA issues that Samantha will be working on. We have payroll and other uh, personnel issues that we'll address, that we'll bring, bring in forward. But you also have a little bit of flexibility for consideration this year as you're looking at your levy. Based on your growth and I wanted you to be aware of that as you're thinking of this. Because as we've talked and you know, we've gone through a number of iterations on goal setting. And you've looked at a multiple series of where do you wanna see this community going? What we heard repeatedly was community growth, economic growth. You are already starting to see some of that, just from the benefit of location, you're in a good location, but you've also got. Organizations and companies and residential that are committing to your community. You've got, you've got some options, so I, I don't want you to be thinking that there isn't revenue flow. It will require a levy increase. And I'm not gonna tell you, you're just gonna be naturally get growth, so therefore, you know, my litany on that, you don't get growth just cause it comes through, you have to levy for it. So it's a consideration that I think as you're looking at this. It at least gives you another piece of the puzzle on how do you wanna approach it and it may help you in your prioritization.
Thank you.
If you took a ten percent levy increase. On a thirteen percent growth. You'd be looking at approximately one point five million. Just rough numbers floating off the top of my head, just to give you a start. Okay?
Perfect.
Gives you something to think about when you wake up at night. And hurts too.
So, Mr. McNeil, what?
Yes.
How can we help for this, this discussion, like what, is there anything concrete you'd like from us, are you getting? An idea as to where we'd like to go with things?
We're not looking for a final answer tonight, what the intent was tonight was for, you could be thinking about this because. A week from Tuesday, the nineteenth, when we have regular council meeting, we're gonna be talking about budget. And we're gonna be making some proposals as far as here's money that we would like to see to do some studies so that, for example, if. If you want to have community meetings starting next year, we'll have something from which to work and make some decisions. But at some point, as, as Ms. Lenahan has pointed out. These things do have costs involved with them. And it's likely in a lot of the downtown area, it's not going to be seen with significant increases in tax. Base growth as a result, but you'll stabilize what you have and over time, you're going to attract new stuff coming in. So there's gonna be a repay um, on this, but you're gonna have to be a little more patient. But this is an opportunity to at least start to talk about the things that as we began the evening. Uh, looked at, we're looking at thirty years ago, we'd like to move on on this, so. If you're okay with that, we're gonna be making some recommendations to staff, you tell us whether you're comfortable with that or not. We'll have what those numbers are and you can ultimately, as the decision makers, are gonna have to determine what your levy will be for next year. Questions or comments?
Uh, well, I'd like to hear from council as to, so I kinda put my three zones out there as to what I think are the most. Critical for the near future for the community, does uh, anyone agree with that? Is that not the direction we're gonna go? Each of those, like the downtown residential district would. It's mostly a program kinda thing, I think, as to in putting money into programs like we used to have. For helping people restore homes historically and things like that. That we didn't use for, that we haven't used for a while. And then downtown and the riverfront housing districts are more putting together a plan and implementing it. Beyond twenty fifteen. So what, Councilman Whiting?
I agree with your point on the downtown commercial district. Talking about uh, that as a priority, I, I would not completely throw out the train whistle zone. That needs to boil for a little while and cook and see what happens and do some things there before we have any idea what we're gonna do with that, but. But I'm not throwing that out yet.
And I'm not either, just so you know.
Okay, I have some concerns with some of the uh, the east end riverfront housing district ideas because, you know, people live there. And uh, there are some opportunities down there. But if we start land banking some of that, it could take twenty years, thirty years before we have enough to do any real major project, I don't know, it could, could be sooner. And I still think that there's opportunity on the west end for some of that high-rise. But it's starting to get into the west end uh, employment district that we've talked about. I kinda, I still like that uh, corner of the river there where the river turns is a potential for. For some uh, opportunity to see the river with some high-rise buildings and things like that. But there's people that own that property too, so. But side acquisition, uh, train, streetscapes, parking lots, it's all gonna be part of it.
Okay.
And I like the idea of the downtown residential area, but I will have to say I do live down there, so uh, I have to add that.
You have to live somewhere, Jack.
You have to live somewhere, but uh, you know, putting it out there.
Matt?
I'm uh, short-term focusing on the downtown commercial district.
What does that mean?
Well, I think a lot of small things will go a long way, si- signage is gonna be key, some of the streetscape stuff. Some of the programs that we already have. The things that we've already talked about with the main street people and some of these other groups, I think that'll go a long way for that area. It's not gonna get done in one year financially. The west end industrial, that's gonna come just by fruition uh, at some point. It's already been started and it's just a matter of time when it, when uh, Rar and the various property owners work it out. I'm not sure I'm convinced that putting housing in a floodplain is a smart idea. I would leave that to the people that build them, if they wanna build them, they can buy the properties as they're available and they can build them, I'm really not a developer. The east end riverfront in a floodplain, I'm just not uh. It's not my specialty to uh, be a real estate and a developer, I prefer to let the free market do that. They see an opportunity, I know Sweeney's property's been for sale for a while, if a developer wanted to, to do what that implies. They've had ample opportunity to do it over years and they haven't, so. I would say the uh, free market enterprise is probably the smartest in the world to figure that one out, over me for sure. Uh, we already have we- west end riverfront housing districts with the three areas that we put there already. Is there room for more in that area? Maybe, maybe not, I think it's a free market enterprise issue again. So, that's kinda where I'm at.
Okay.
I think the east end uh, riverfront district there, everything that's built there now is not in the floodplain. Everything below the uh. Cliff, if you wanna call it that, is floodplain, you can't build in the floodplain, that it's all off limits, so. Anything that's there now uh, can be built on, it's never flooded up to that point. Uh, the worst flood we had was at the back door of a few of the houses. So, you know, they could uh, easily put something there, but I don't think we need to land bank a ton of houses down there. If something would come available, you know, for the right price, I think we could maybe look at it. Uh, as far as the west end. It's a similar situation, we've got older housing stocks that are uh, in need of repair and sometimes, some cases that people can't do it. Um, those houses are going to depreciate and at some point, they're gonna need to be dealt with. Uh, I think our main concern is downtown. The main concern in my book is the whistle, once we have something solid on that. And I'd like to tell people out there that are listening, uh, we do have a meeting scheduled with the Union Pacific Vice President. This month, other than that, we don't know anything, but that's gonna be our first meeting with them. Downtown, I think we can chip away bits and pieces, try and do the uh, less expensive things first. Test a few things like the uh, taking out a parking spot, if a business wants to and put a temporary seating deal. If it works, maybe we can implement, implement it in a wider area, but uh, I think we need to test that first. As far as the lot that needs to be fixed, definitely needs to be fixed because we're looking at possible legal problems there. Uh, it's getting in pretty bad shape. I think uh, rescaping it, um, the way it's laid out, I think we could make that look a little better, as long as we're doing it.
Can I ask you what you meant, so when you said um. That, so like the parking lot needs to be redone, cause it's starting to fall apart, there's along the streetscapes. You said, I'll back up, uh, you only wanna do small things in the downtown, smaller things like uh, allowing people to have. More seating outside and things like that.
I'd like to test it.
Yeah.
Before we go.
Right, but so what do we do with all the areas like where the, the light poles are falling down and the bricks are sticking out and the. The uh, parking lot grates are up two inches and, I mean, the three grates and stuff like that.
Those, those things all have to be fixed, I think all the pavers need to come out and I think we, if we do anything there, we put in colored concrete, I like the different look. The different color, but the pavers were a bad idea, they never should've been put in, they just move around too much.
But it all has to be one fell swoop. Do it.
Streetscape kinda.
Yeah, you're right, it's cause the lighting would be with the pavers because of, of the buried wiring and all that.
I'm just trying to understand where you're going with everything and how we do it, pieces.
Well, I think he's, I think he's saying, Mayor, if you try out the parking thing with the, the, the tables and chairs and parking spaces and. Maybe a season or two, see how it works and get a feel of how it's gonna work, if it's gonna work and your pros and cons as it's working. Then when you do the streetscape, you know how to implement that into it. You know, because if you're gonna tear out the pavers and everything else and put in stamped concrete and stuff, you, you might have the ability to kind of shift stuff around a little bit.
Yeah. No, and I don't disagree whatsoever with that, except for the fact that there's, in my opinion, there are a lot of. Hazards and issues down there today that need to get fixed a few years ago.
Right.
I, I like his idea about the low hanging fruit stuff, you know.
Absolutely.
You know, if we can fix it, let's, let's do that, we need to do that. And I, and I wanna hope that you, we can add some of that alley work too to those parking lots, cause they're pretty dangerous.
Definitely. You know, if the, the utility company's gonna come through and dig up the alley and, you know, they would have to repave it. We take the money from them, put that towards concreting it, do it upright.
I'd do the one especially next to the parking lot, if engineering, if it makes sense from that standpoint, it seems like a no-brainer, but I'm an engineer.
Kathy?
Can I have my slide back?
Yeah, no, for sure.
Oh, sure. Sam up first?
It's not a big deal, I just wanted to show you, this was, um, I met with a business last week who's looking at coming into the downtown. And he'd mentioned that he for sure wanted outs- outdoor dining and so since that's a challenge that we have, he'd sent me a picture. Of something that they are doing in South Dakota and was wondering if this would be something that we would potentially consider doing for them. So, and I did, also one of our planners has some experience in Iowa doing this, so I think there's numerous things that we could look at doing if we kept an open mind. So, I just wanna show that to you.
Do they take that down in the winter?
They do, they take it down in the winter, this is a, the wood piece is movable. And so, Alex said in, in Iowa, what they did is where these big block columns are.
Yep.
They actually put the planters inside there and the city owned the planters, the city would come out, put them in place.
Take them away in the winter and you got parking spots?
And then your parking is back.
That's good.
We're talking about flowers again.
And it's safe so the cars can't hit you, cause it's kinda creepy stuff.
Yeah.
How do they deal with the alcohol uh, serving out in the seated area?
I'm as, I'm assuming that is allowed, it is just like an extra spot of your restaurant, you can go out there and serve any food.
I think you gotta be in that fenced in area, just like it is, you used to get at the bar down here.
Yeah, we have outdoor.
Or they could bring it outside.
Yep, but you had to be on the patio, so I think here it's, you gotta be in the fenced in area.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why they have the rail.
Which we just approved in our. Uh, this year, yeah.
A Digger Fields has got it on the backside.
And there would be some things you have, need to consider with, you know, uh, apartments across the street, probably have to put a limit at nine o'clock or something like that.
Yeah, please. Well, I'm all for the downtown, um, with the streetscape, get it, putting that on. More of an immediate need for me, um, I would also like to see something else done on east end. I, I understand the idea that it's, you have partially re, you know, the free market, but I think the. Part of this body is that we need to be guiding about what eventually goes in there and that's what's more important to me right now. Um, I'd also like to see more of the neighborhood industrial, um, I liked that concept, it's something, you know, we all grew up with. Where you had the businesses and the people lived on top. And then I think even in the downtown residential, you talked about some of them having larger lots, I know. Some of the, you know, Minneapolis, St. Paul, they've done where now they're doing like the in-law homes and things on, allowing those on back, backyard. So, it increased density.
We have to keep parking in mind though when we do that. It's a terrible problem in Minneapolis, especially in the winter.
Problem in the suburbs. One last comment, uh, cause we are putting in all these bike trails and things, I think this micability thing is like. Immediate and, and low hanging fruit that we gotta. immediate and, and low-hanging fruit that we gotta jump all over, and, um, signage and things like that is gonna be simple and hopefully simple, and, uh.
Bike City USA for twenty fifteen?
Bike racks.
We're looking at applying in February would be the next application time for that.
Weren't you looking for a bike rack at Huber Park, did you find one?
Yeah, Derby Days, I tied my, uh, bike to a tree, it was.
That's a cheap rack, isn't it? Yeah, it's not great for the tree, nor is it, uh, yeah.
My understanding is we can get some grants for bike racks.
We have Laura looking into it, I think.
I think Laura mentioned that.
So, I, I think one thing I want to mention, as I've kind of been sitting back, listening to all of you, is I think that all of this kind of should dance the same dance together, so if you're gonna go through and start digging up alleys and, and potentially looking at railroad sections that should be opened or closed, or, you know, I just think that this is something that should all be done at the same time. Because we want to make it look like this was definitely something that we had put thought in, it was a coordinated effort. You know, we don't want to get done and then say, oh, maybe when we had this tore up, we should have offered to do this, or done something at the same time. So I guess that's just something that I, I've kind of heard all of you saying it, and I don't know if you're all kind of thinking it, but that's what I would personally like to see done, is if you're gonna start something and we're gonna have a Main Street District, I would hope that our entire Main Street looks like it goes together and that you can walk the district and make the whole thing safe, and that we'd analyze what's needed throughout the entire Main Street District. I do appreciate the downtown commercial node, but I think if we've included the Main Street District into the East End, I would hope that that's something that we're also taking into consideration, that if you're gonna make things walkable, that you'll want to extend that, so it's walkable and safe for the whole district.
One thing I'd like to add, um.
You know, they, you hear about that often, is that part of the Main Street program, though, is making you feel like as you're walking through it, that it's all joint, and I don't know right now that you would feel like the East End is the same as your downtown district. As you walk through it, are all the sidewalks, do they look like they go together, is there a, a bike path that goes through the entire area, or does it stop and you jump on and off places?
Well, I'm confused, I mean, the sidewalks down on the east side are all brand-new with the First Avenue project, so what would we change there?
I don't know, I would just want to make sure that if you wanted to incorporate some type of signage or some type of biking, something that it looked like it did all go together, so that you could not only start in the downtown, but end up at the KFC safely, knowing that you have more options for lunch rather than just in the downtown.
Okay, so we're not gonna redo a streetscape that's brand-new?
No, no.
No, but maybe taking the one-on-one that's there and including that in too.
I just want to say amen, no. Couple reasons why, I think most of our projects that we work on now in public works and engineering, the planning process and the getting the funding process is way more time-consuming and involved than the actual building. Once you know what you want to build, building it is nothing, I mean, really, once you get the permits and, you know, get all the EISs and the EAWs. I mean, that's the truth, the projects nowadays, it takes a long time to get it off the ground, but once you get building, that's probably the easiest thing we can do. I agree, we're gonna fix some of those tripping hazards, that's, that's a maintenance responsibility, we're gonna work on that yet this fall, so some of those things will be taken care of. The parking lot, if we want to do that, the signage, you know, but then get a plan together, get a funding plan together. There's nothing worse than piecemeal, and I'll give you an example, just replacing some of those lights, our cost, each light costs is double when we go one at a time. If we go in a volume pricing basis as a group, it's much more cost-effective, so. I think that's what Sam was kind of saying, I'm just saying it from another perspective as a public works.
Is the parking lot in the CIP?
Well, we kinda threw that out there, we could put it into twenty fifteen, twenty, I think we talked twenty sixteen, but if we have utility companies coming through there in the alley and it's a high priority for council, we let that up to you to say if we can put that in there, we, we certainly can move it up to twenty fifteen.
I mean, do we want to wait for the parking lot until we figure out a whole new streetscape down here? Are we gonna fix the tripping hazards, maybe fix the parking lot, start doing these outside, uh, things like we saw from other areas and see how it works, and then do a streetscape after you fix all the tripping hazards?
My sense is we could do the parking lot and maybe in alleys, and the signage, and, and we can look at the tripping hazards, and then you come up with a plan. Again, like Councilor Lou said, you would take out all the paver bricks at once and repave it once, much more cost-effective, take the lights out, if we want to redo the lights. See, then you, all of a sudden, you get into major project, and then, then you get into, well, should we do the concrete ramps, the ADA ramps? Oh, yeah, we should do that while we're taking out the paver brick. Oh, we should be replacing some panels, oh, now we look at the landscaping, you, you see, all of a sudden, you get into a major project. And so that's where I'm saying you really need to have a good firm plan that you can endorse and fund, then rebuild.
Now, I spoke to someone up at St. Cloud at the, uh, conference we were at on lighting, it seemed like the LED prices are coming way down, is that your impression?
Um, yeah, and when we talk LEDs, we're talking about the light fixtures, so that some of the light fixtures, the LEDs that we're using on the, uh, that we're replacing the Cobra Heads, or the, or the actually, the, um, shoebox ones that we used to have, they're actually coming down quite competitively, so, yes. Each year, they're coming down a little more at a time. But the cost savings is there from electricity standpoint and longevity, so if you factor that in, they are cost-effective. So.
And then we do get a kick in from Spuck on those.
Well, Spuck donates the power, we actually save them.
Being that we're, if they're LEDs, they're, they're using less power, so it's not costing them so much, so.
Yeah.
Didn't they throw some in on the ones they did on one-on-one?
Yeah, well, actually, we paid for that with the state, uh, the state pricing, but there is a program.
Maybe Eagle Creek, is that maybe where they did it?
No, there is a program, if there's energy conservation, they have so many conservation dollars that they have to spend, we might be able to get some of those dollars. But again, that's, as we get into this, putting the whole funding package together, you know, that's, that's my two cents.
Where's the light prices up there?
Mayor and council, what I'm hearing tonight is there's a consensus that you want to do the central business district and look at at least some of the improvements that we're talking about there, the parking lot, uh, we want to make sure that we are at least in that area gonna be addressing utilities and the alley at that particular location. Uh, maybe sidewalk ramps, street lighting, we want to have a comprehensive plan on that. Uh, tree grates, at least in the areas where we don't have to redo things, um, with that, and then some of the smaller ones down here, but I would also like to put in some planning money so that we can really get the plan together, so that we can discuss it, and that by two thousand sixteen, then, we can start to make some of these other investments. I also hear that there's interest, anyway, at least the majority, uh, to look at the East End, and whether that, it's probably gonna be a plan at this point, but at least identify where we might go. Also, West End, we know that RAR's gonna be coming in, if there's something that we can do to work with them. Uh, certainly, if they can do that privately, we'd love to see that happen, but if we can coordinate our efforts with theirs, I'd like to, I, I think that's probably something we can do. Does that sound like something you'd like to see us bring back in a couple of weeks to talk about as part of the overall budget?
Anyone have concerns or issues with that?
I have none.
We're good.
All right.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Let's see the sewer.
All right, yeah, exactly, all right, uh, any other business from anyone?
One, uh, one quick comment, I want to thank all of you for helping out at Derby Days this weekend, it was, I think, the first time ever that each council person had a separate shift somewhere and worked and volunteered, and so I just want to thank you guys for that.
Yeah, and for all your hard work, uh, with all the Derby Day stuff, that was, uh, good, and Matt as liaison. Very good, yeah, it went, uh, it was a fun weekend, busy, fun weekend. So, all right, I entertain a motion to adjourn to August nineteenth, twenty fourteen at seven P M.
Show move.
Council Wyden, do you have a second?
Second.
Senator Mokel, any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Hi.
Anyone opposed? Pass the unanimously, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.